Meeting here to order for the Cadillac Planning Commission for November 23rd, 2020. If everyone would please join me for the pledge, I have the flag tonight for the pledge. Got to get creative in what we do. So if everyone joined me, so I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America. One nation, one nation, God, and their justice. Invisible, liberty, and justice. Thank you, everyone. Who's ever doing roll call, please? Is that Mr. Wallace or?
Me, Mike tonight.
Mr. Coy, please.
Philkins.
Here.
Thank you. Schultz. Bunce. I see you.
Here.
Bosscher. Greg Bosscher here. Baumann.
Here.
Fent.
Here.
Putfin.
Here.
Greg. We have a quorum.
Wonderful. I was asked to just kind of make a statement here to the Planning Board. Anyone that has capability of having video, to please do so, kind of as per recommendation of city attorneys, that people can see who is present, okay? So having done my service announcement for the city, I am looking to move along here. Need approval here for the agenda this evening for November 23rd, 2020.
So moved.
Mr. Bunce. Seconded, Mr. Baumann. Roll call on that, please, Mr. Coy. When you unmute. Still muted. You're still muted, sir.
Well, how come you both have the same name, Mike?
Right.
Can you unmute, Mike? I was.
There.
No wonder.
I kept.
Let's start over. Bosscher.
Okay.
Wave, Greg. Okay.
Here.
Bunce.
Here.
Fent, this is for approving the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. Philkins.
Yes.
Putfin.
Yes.
Baumann.
Yes.
Okay. The agenda is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Coy. At this point, if there's anyone in the audience that has any public comment pertaining to anything not that we're discussing tonight, please feel free to jump in.
Not on the topic or only on the church topic?
Not on topic.
Okay.
Because we'll be discussing that topic. Let's just open to any public comment other than what we're going to discuss tonight. I have caller two. Could caller number two please identify? Are you a member, board member? Number one I know is Kevin. Okay. That's all fine. All righty. Next here, hearing no public comment, I'm going to move along. Now I'm looking for an approval of the October 26th, 2020 meeting minutes, please.
So moved.
Mayor Philkins. Seconded, Mr. Baumann.
Okay. Going to do a roll call. Baumann?
Yes.
Fent?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Bosscher?
Yes.
Putfin?
Yes.
We can move on.
Thank you, Mr. Coy. We are here this evening having a public hearing. This is a Head Start Programming Child Care Center located at 403 East North Street. At this time, it is a vacant church building is on this site. The applicant is the 131 Group, L.L.C., located at 504 North McEwan Street, Claire, Michigan. For conversation's sake, 48617. Having read what we are here for, I am going to turn this over to Mr. Coy.
Okay. I'm going to give a brief background here and then John Wallace has got some information that he would like to present. The owner of the church is the Crown of Life Evangelical Lutheran Church. They are the folks hoping to sell this property. And I believe Michelle Maidens is here with the realtor firm that is representing them. The potential purchaser is the 131 Group, which is an investment group that in turn would lease the property to the Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency. And they run Head Start programs throughout a 10-county area. Sanders Scott is here with us. He's a realtor representing the 131 Group. And we also have Kelly Stockfish with the Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency with us, and I think another person or two from that agency to answer questions that people may have on this particular application. In your package, you should have got their application. You should have had a site plan. It was a little tough to read because it was eight and a half by 11. But John and John Wallace and John Putfin, they, we do have a larger one that you can just see better. And I also included in your packets, G.I.S. of the aerial. This is a request, the application for a special land use to allow for an early education childcare facility at the former church. I'm not sure how long, but I believe the church has been, I don't know if the right term is vacant, but I don't believe they've had a congregation meeting there regularly for a couple of years. Anyway, the intent is if the special land use is granted, this, the 131 Group will purchase it and then lease it for the Head Start Early Education Child Care Facility. And in this, both schools and churches and nursery schools, they're in allowed use, but a special land use. So you don't need to do a rezoning in a one-family residential neighborhood. We had a similar case in December of 2018, and I say it was similar, it just had to do with childcare, daycare. And the Munson Hospital, Munson Healthcare Group, they were the ones that were behind that. They wanted to rent the former school, McCauley Center, to a licensed childcare provider to provide childcare for children and families within the Cadillac community. The similarity was the use. There's also similarities in that the one at the McCauley Center, at the Munson Healthcare Complex, that is surrounded on two sides by one-family residential neighborhoods also. So there, those are the similarities. They had to do a rezoning because the property, though, was zoned office service, not one family, and so there were some differences there. The site here, it's a large site. It's 28,000 square feet. And in a residential neighborhood, a conforming size lot can be of size of 6,000 square foot. So this is over four times larger than the required lot size. And we actually have some childcare facilities here in Cadillac for up to 12 children that actually are on much smaller lots. So we do have some of them. Those of you on the Planning Commission, the G.I.S. aerial that I provided you, when you look at it immediately to the east, is a home that used to be the parsonage for the church. My understanding is the church sold that in 2020, the latter half of 2020. And so now that is a residential home, not a parsonage, not a part of the church. That's kind of substantial for us because now it's a property that will be actually generating property taxes for caps for the city, for the county. So by no longer being church property, it now will be subject to property taxes. So that's just off the, you know, just something that has to do with this whole thing. I'm not going to say a whole lot more. We did send public notices to neighbors within 300 feet, and we put it in the paper, and it was more than 15 days prior to this meeting. In your packet and the staff report, I also listed the terms, the basis for determination for a special land use, things that, you know, need to be considered. Basically, in looking at these, John Wallace and myself, we feel that these items under the basis of determination, they're meeting it pretty well. And we feel they meet the conditions listed in this basis for determination and the standards for compliance. Parking, we also are recommending that a final site plan go before the City of Cadillac Site Plan Review Committee. If you look at the site plan that you were provided, we definitely are going to want more details on fencing, parking, and those types of items. And our Site Plan Review Committee consists of the Community Development Director, me, the zoning administrator, our Public Safety Director, our fire chief or our fire captains, Public Works, utilities. So we have a group that review these site plans to make sure they meet all the required standards. Some site plans are approved by this commission, and that's something you'll have to, if this is approved, give some thought as to whether you want a final site plan to come back before you or allow the Site Plan Review Committee to handle that. I guess I'm going to let John, if you have anything you want to add, I definitely want Kelly Stockfish to be able to explain. She understands how this works, the other ones they manage. Some of you may be familiar. They manage a Head Start Classroom type of thing, similar to this, on Lincoln Street, which is also a residential neighborhood. And that is one that their organization manages, that particular one. I like, well, the church site has significantly more paved parking. I'll just leave it at that. So, John, did you want to add anything before we get into questions? And hopefully Kelly can answer some of them.
I'll go through a PowerPoint illustrating some of the points you've made. When I get done with my comments, if the operator of the childcare facility or the representative of the 131 Group would like to round out some of the comments that they feel important, that could happen at that time. And then following their comments to fully give more detail on the project, then it would be time to go back to the chairperson to open the public hearing. But before I get into that, I've been hearing from an outside source that some of you may not be able to see the videos that are up on the screen. I'm seeing about three-quarters of you having video. If you are not able to see the video of the people in this meeting, could you turn on your mics and let us know how prevalent that is?
I only see a few people. I see John, John, Greg, Kelly, and Stephen.
I'm seeing only about five of you as well. Not the same five, but similar.
And this is Mayor Philkins, and I can't see anyone, and I don't have the option of turning the camera or the screen. So I can hear everyone.
I'm seeing 17 people on my screen.
John, this is Mike. I'm able to visually see 17 different people.
Yeah. This is Marcus, the city manager. There are three dots somewhere on your screen, a menu dot. And if you click the three dots, it should give you options to click something that'll say view, view who is talking. And notably, my video is not on because I'm not in a room where I could, I'm in a dark room, and you're not going to be able to see anything. But if my video was on and you were to click that, you would then see, well, you wouldn't really see me because I don't have any lights on, but you would see the room I'm in. So I'd encourage folks to look at the little circle with the three vertical dots on it and maybe select the option for view who is talking. And then I believe the video that you're looking at will then switch every time somebody says something, if that's of help.
Actually, it's actually not the three. It's the video button to the left of your microphone, and that's where you change it.
That's great. Thank you. I'm using just a cell phone, so on my phone it's three dots. But yeah, whatever the option is on whatever device you're using.
We'll wait a minute or two and see if that improves for anybody.
You go to the top of the screen where it says talking, and it says caller one, right across about mid-screen, right above John's face, there's a view everyone. If you look, click on that, it says who's talking, active cameras, hide everyone. Just if you click on view everyone, everybody will be on your screen.
Is anyone having any more success?
No, but I would just go ahead with the meeting, please.
Okay. All right, I'm going to share my screen. I put a PowerPoint together. And again, this is kind of synopsis. I'll go through it somewhat fast, but I have a lot of the visuals. Mike Coy covered some of the basics of the application, but I wanted you to see a lot of the pictures and graphics and so forth, so you have a better idea of the site and what would be happening on the site. So I will share my screen now and go to my PowerPoint. Got it. Are you seeing a special use permit request up on the screen?
Proposed use.
Yep.
Yep.
Got it. Okay. The proposed use, Mike went over childcare facility. A little bit more detail, the, there will be four classes housed in this facility. Two would be for early Head Start, which would be zero to three years of age, and two, regular Head Start, which is three to five years of age. There will be potential for 16 children in the early Head Start and potential for 36 children in the regular Head Start. The early Head Start is operated all year, and the regular Head Start is operated from September through May. The building and the site will be maintained by the Northwest Community Action Agency. They will be having a longer-term lease, I believe it's 15 years from the owner, and they will be in charge of maintaining not only the site, but the building as well. The following few screens will just be the view of the current facility, and I'll point out a few things. On this particular view, there would be potential to have parallel parking along the street. It's also has an entrance to a parking lot from this particular angle, just to the right of off-screen. But on this particular photo, you'll see the area, which is to the right of the building. And that area, which is a depressed area, is actually where the majority of the playground space would be. So it's really several feet below grade and somewhat sheltered between the rising berm that goes up to the parking lot and the building itself, and then also a rising berm on the street frontage. And then I think there's a kind of a fall-off off the back of a site from the playground area, which goes down to other residential areas across the, from the back of the church site. This gives you a close-up of the depressed area showing where the playground area, the majority of it would be. There would be a little bit on the backside of the parking lot. That portion may not be used or little used. Simply, it was shown to meet our ordinance requirement, which is for 5,000 square feet. And the applicant doesn't believe that they will need to utilize the full 5,000 square feet that is required. This is just a picture of a side of the building that would remain intact in its current capacity. There's no planned activities for this side of the building. This is the backside of the building. It has two entries. I know one is a entry to a mechanical room. I'm not sure the entry to the other. To my knowledge, I don't know that there would be active movement from the school out these doors, but it would be more from a service capacity and the childcare operator, when they make their comments, could perhaps comment more on that. This is actually the parking lot, which is up the slope from the building. And as Mike mentioned, they do have capacity to meet all the required parking for the facility. In fact, they can remove a back portion of the parking lot to meet our 5,000 square-foot requirement for the playground area. This information, I've capitalized some of the key points from the staff report. All this information should be in your staff report for the Planning Commission Board members. All the surrounding properties are residential. The former church is approximately 3,600 square feet and also has a basement level. There is a home at 413 East North Street, which was sold from the church to a family. They have retained the necessary access easement rights across the parking lot so that they would have continued use of their garage on their site, even with this new proposed use. The, this view is just an aerial view to kind of give you an idea of what's happening and the proximity of different buildings to the site. If you look just to the right of the church building, you can see a green space. That's the area that's in a depressed kind of zone between the parking lot and the building. And then the parking lot, which is up several feet from the area proposed for the playground space. And you can see the proximity of the back entries for the building out to the alley, to the back of the church building. This is the home that is located directly adjacent to the facility. It is the home that has the easement rights retained for it. And just to give you some idea of the home that was involved. This is also somewhat small. I don't know if I can zoom in, but basically in gold, it shows the church building, and the green area shows the area that's proposed to meet the 5,000 square-foot requirement that our ordinance has for playground space. The little outcropping of green that enters into the parking area is the portion they may not need in terms of the playground space, but they were needing to show the ability to meet the ordinance requirement. It's, our ordinance requirement is, to my understanding, well above what the state requires for playground space. Mike Coy went over the standards and referred to the staff report. There are a number of just general standards that administratively we have to go through, such as, does the site have sufficient utilities to serve the facility? What are the impacts on the surrounding area essentially? Is it compatible with what has happened in this area of the community? And continued use of properties? Mike has responded to all those questions in the staff report. If you have specific questions, we'd be happy to address those, but they would all be in your staff report. And finally, as Mike also mentioned, because of our history of looking at similar proposals, the structure of our zoning, this type of use has been approved in a number of locations throughout the city. We feel that it does meet the standards, general standards contained for special use permit. That said, we're recommending just a few conditions for, if you're so inclined to approve, and of course, you're not obligated to accept staff recommendation. And those conditions would be that a final site plan be submitted to the city. It would be up to the Planning Commission Board whether you're satisfied that that site plan be reviewed by our administrative committee, which includes myself, Mike, and our department heads, or whether you would like to see that site plan come back to the full Planning Commission Board. You can include that in your motion when the time comes. And that that site plan, in addition to showing more detail on locations of different things, it would also give a lot of details on materials that would be used, sizes of different things, whether it be fencing or whether it be landscaping, the sizing of parking stalls, all those various things that would have to be considered. And part of that site plan approval would also be include that the appropriate drainage standards be reviewed, that there is satisfactory drainage on the property, given the new development on the site. So that's basically capsizes our review of the project. If the, if the current owner of the property... current owner of the property or their app, or representative for the, uh, new owner or the childcare facility operator would like to make additional comments to maybe round out the information I provided, not to be repetitive. But if you had some highlights of things I may have missed, uh, it would be appropriate to make those now. And then we can go back to the chairman and he can open up the public hearing.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. I'll go. Thank you. John, um, my name's Kelly Stockfish and I work for Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency. And we are the representative who would like to move into this facility and lease this facility for a childcare, um, early education center. Um, we operate, um, centers at Lincoln Street currently in Cadillac, in addition to Marty Paul Street in Cadillac. Um, we have thirty-eight head start sites across ten counties. Um, this would be our second development of early head start, um, child-based, center-based, um, program. We have another program that we're, um, firing up in Houghton Lake currently for that. This is an expansion grant that the federal government identified as areas of need. Cadillac was specified. Houghton Lake it was as well, um, specifically for intense need for this, um, for the public, for public use. So we applied for this grant and we're, um, we're an applicant for this grant and we're granted this grant and that's the reason for the early head start expansion, um, center-based program. Our two head start classrooms that would move into this building are currently housed at Kenwood, um, which is under construction as part of the CAPS, um, bond proposal and, um, rebuilding, restructuring that they're doing within CAPS. And we can only stay in that building for this current school year and then we have to move out. So we're looking for space for those classrooms as well. Um, um, to address your que- um, question or to further comment on the back of the building, the one, um, access is for the mechanical room and the other access is for the kitchen area as the building currently sits today. Um, I've been through the building several times and that's what those two, that's what those two doors are for. At this point, we would have actually, um, if all the approvals went through there on the upper level or the parsonage or the main level of the church, um, there is a ramp out there with steep steps and that would all be converted to ADA accessible, accessible, um, as an exit off that upper level. Um, to, and it would empty out into the playground, um, as a fire exit for the children. Um, NMCAA has been in, in business for a long, long time. Um, we are federally funded. We've never lost federal funding um, in the forty-plus years that our agency's, um, been in business. Um, we, um, service many children throughout, um, the Cadillac area and the other surrounding to, or the ten counties that we're in. Cadillac in particular, we've never not had a waiting list for our services. We've never been able to fully accommodate all of the children that sit on our waiting lists. We constantly, um, look to see how we can do better and what we can do to further broaden our services and meet the needs of the, um, of the public within, um, the Cadillac community. Um, in addition to early head start and head start, NMCAA has meals on wheels, tax preparation, um, budget, um, housing, homeless prevention. We have veteran services over twenty counties, not just ten qua- ten counties. Um, so what we really strive to do is encompass the whole family, not just the children that are in our program. Um, we help if a family's struggling to get their child to one of our programs, what do we need to do to help them be successful? Is it as easy as a battery for their car? Okay. Do we have funding or does somebody else we know have funding to help them to meet that need? Um, do they need assistance in other ways? Is their home not weatherized? Um, can we make their house warmer? Um, so that they don't worry so much about the daily cost of that to, you know, all the contributing factors and pieces and parts that make a family in everyday life. Um, we encompass the whole family, not just the children served in our program. And if we can't help them through our agency and our funding, we try to connect them with local community organizations that can help them. When we come into the communities, we try to, um, hire local contractors, work with local folks, um, provide job, job, job opportunities. Um, our classrooms, our two head start classrooms have four staff members each. Our early head start expansion classrooms have, um, three full-time staff person and one swing person per classroom for those. And then we have auxiliary folks that also service it, service these classrooms, like site supervisors, um, family engagement specialists, education coaches, and all the other staff that come in as support staff to help. And those people are in and out as needed to provide, um, additional support and services for, um, the children and the programming that we provide. What questions can I answer?
Mr. Coy?
Kelly, the head start program, the, uh, classrooms, what are the hours of operation?
Typically, um, eight to three or eight thirty to three thirty. It just depends on, um, which program and where, um, what the needs are of the community in the area that we serve. That's for the head start for the three to five population. Our early head start expansion, um, is open a little longer and they're open all year, which is a, a change for us. We're typically not there in the summer. Um, but we found that that's a much-needed service, um, in, in, in almost all the areas that we're in, but particularly in Cadillac and our program that we're firing up in Houghton Lake as well.
Any other questions for Kelly? Anyone before I?
Yeah, I've got, I've got. Yeah, just curious, you know, that space that you're looking at for a playground area. Um, it's, well, it looks to me, you know, I, I know this area. I go, I live right close by, go by there quite a bit. Are you going to be able to grade that grassy area out enough to make? Well, you don't need a huge playground, that's for sure. You could probably put some equipment in there and whatnot. Um, is it adequate for you?
Oh, it's more than adequate for what the requirements are for our program. Um, LARA, the licensing, um, regulatory that oversees this for the state of Michigan, requires seventy-five square feet per child, um, which is about thirteen hundred square feet for a playground. And your regulations are five thousand, so it's way over and above what we would typically have. Um, not that we go to the minimum standard. We try to get as, as wide as, as we can. Um, but there's more than enough space there, um, to do what we need to do, um, and provide outdoor, not only education space, but just place for the kids to play in green area. Um, when we originally looked at the building, the area that we looked at was the, was the area closest to the building, um, and contained within the green area. And then it kind of buffers and bowls up as it goes up towards, um, up towards the parking lot.
Right, okay, yeah. Well, good, okay. That answers my question.
Any other questions from anyone in our audience or board members?
Well, the pub- the public comments should start when you open the public hearing, uh.
Kelly, I'd get it out of the way.
Yeah, right. Just the, uh, the applicant, uh, folks first, and then you can open the public hearing.
Okay.
Hi, I'm, uh, I'm Sanders Scott. I'm, uh, um, a real estate professional with Colville Banker Schmidt, and I'm working with the one thirty-one group representing the buyer um, of this property. And really, uh, I think, um, Mr. Wallace's presentation really did a fine job. I don't know what else I could really add other than, um, I remember Kelly, you mentioning that on the scorecard that, um, you know, that Head Start, um, uh, uses to try to determine the suitability of a site. They really, uh, you know, uh, uh, where this, uh, location is, score is really high because they really want their childcare facilities to be within a walkable community, within the neighborhood, rather than being, um, you know, in a commercial setting, part of a, a strip mall type setting, those kinds of things. And so it is something that, that Head Start and, um, you know, the federal, uh, government, the, the section that funds Head Start really looks for is, is being a part of a, of a, of a community where, um, not that every parent, when they bring their child there, is going to, uh, walk, but that it's, that it's, uh, in a walkable community. So, um, that's really the only thing I have to add, um, uh, certainly can be available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thanks, Sanders, for that follow-up. And you are correct. And, and one of the reasons we looked at this area, um, of Cadillac, we looked at all of Cadillac. I've scoured Cadillac um, for spaces for NMCAA is that we're really close to a federal opportunity zone that the federal government has declared as an area of need and, and a potential for growth and development. And to, to put funds into those programs or multiple different programs, not just a program like ours to do those. And we're just a click outside of that area. But we do look for areas that we have walkability, where we draw, um, clients from. We often have, um, recruitment or families that reside from this area that now have to take their children to other sites away from their, their home community, um, to provide the needs and the services that we have for them.
Okay, if everybody's good at this time, I'll keep this thing moving a little. Uh, at this time, I will open up the public hearing. So anyone in our audience here wishing to speak in favor or against, we'll, we'll take it either way tonight. Uh, please.
John. Uh, John, this Greg Basher. At this year, um, I do, I do need to, uh, just let you as chairman of the board know. I will, uh, recuse myself from voting, uh, in this. I think you were made aware that I just need to state that publicly. And we'll come in on the public comment side.
Perfect. Thank you, Greg. Okay, other than that, we still have a quorum. I was in a situation similar to what Greg was and had to recuse myself, so, anyway. Um, so he won't vote or anything on this, uh, at all, just so everybody knows. All right. So, again, I'm opening public hearing, either in favor of tonight's proposal or against tonight's proposal. Looking for all comments from anyone.
Hello, um, my name is Kirsten Basher. I am on the public side of this and would like to ask you guys to reconsider this location. Um, I bought my home directly across the street. Um, about, uh, three quarters of those photos you show are, that's essentially my front yard. Um, so when I bought my house, uh, that church, the peacefulness of that church, the lack of traffic flow, the quietness, it's only Sunday mornings, super huge selling point for me. Also a huge part of my property value. Very, very concerned about the change in pace and just the way that this little corner, this cute little quiet corner is viewed. I am not against having more places for kids. However, I do not believe that, um, this is going to help the property values of those people around. Um, so it's huge, huge reason. I, when I bought my house, it was not a daycare center and I do not think that I would have bought my house if it was a daycare center. That being said, the traffic flies through here. Um, I'm just going to let you know that I have two children and I also have a four-year-old stepson. Not in a million years would I let the four-year-old stepson be out on that sidewalk. Um, my older children, absolutely. They actually have enjoyed the parking lot. They can go out there and they can throw a baseball because it's a church and nobody's going to be upset that they're out there just throwing a baseball or bouncing a basketball. Um, but the traffic flies through there. So there, I would, I would just, from living here for two years, I would say there's some concerns about the safety of children coming in and out. And also that's going to be a huge increase in the traffic and the movement, um, right, right in the front of, uh, plenty of houses. Um, the playground, uh, I would say that that area that they're talking about, it's really not that nice. It doesn't really get that much sunshine. There's going to be a huge amount of construction that's going to be need, need to be done. And, um, I'm really, you know, concerned about that as well, just as far as adding, it's a beautiful, it is, it's a gorgeous view. Um, it's appealing to a lot of the neighbors here, um, and that's going to change that. Um, so I'm, I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about that. And I'm also concerned about the, um, I, I would like to know more and I have actually already, I don't really need to know more. I actually have already had this question answered for me. Um, the average amount of income, these, this is going to be a low income, um, amount of people. These kids are coming from a lower income families. They need help, absolutely. But they're coming from there and there's, there's problems that come with that. Um, these parents that have problems funding their children and can't get them into places, these are the individuals that are going to be walking in front of my house. These are going, this is going to be the increased, um, the, it, the increased, um, demographic of people in front of my house is very concerning to me, especially because I have kids getting on and off the bus and walking through there as well. And when I was at church, it felt a lot safer. Not that it's going to be completely unsafe. It's just, I also worry about what this type of facility, facility is going to attract. Um, that being said, um, the back portion is actually, uh, um, an alleyway to a trucking, um, a towing company. There's trucks back there all the time, in and out. Um, you can hear them all the time. Um, so yeah, I would encourage you guys to reconsider your location and consider that the people who have bought houses around here and live around here are concerned about their property values and the decrease in property values despite the fact that the parsonage was sold and will be bringing inland taxes. There's also plenty of other concerns for the people surrounding.
Thank you, Ms. Basher.
I'd like to agree with everything she just said. I am another one that lives directly across the street from that church. And, uh, I really love that church. It's beautiful. I'd love to see it stay a church and be sold to another congregation. And whoever, whoever said it was vacant for two years is, is wrong. It's been active all the time that I've lived here. So anyway, that's, I just wanted to agree with, uh, Kirsten.
Thank you.
So my name is Michelle Maidens. I represent the seller of the church. I feel it's a amazing building and I feel it would be such a great space for children. Um, and who's to say if it didn't sell to this, this group? Um, somebody else might come in and, and change it to something else. I think bringing the, bringing this to the community, there is such a need for it. I'm a mom of three. And I think it's a, it's a safe building with all the rules and the regulations that they have to live up to. It's, it's going to be safe. It's going to be good for, um, good for the area. And so I hope you guys really consider this.
Thank you, Ms. Maidens.
I totally agree with Michelle. Living in a community, especially a tight-knit community, is, is so important, being able to know each other and, um, and just be together. It, it seems as though it's, it might become more of a safe environment because we would have more, uh, more police coming around, so, and people, there would be school signs to make sure that, um, that people know that there is a school. So, and like Michelle was saying, there's licensing requirements and regulations that that are put into place for a reason. And I think it would be a great place to have a facility. It looks like with a little bit of work, that can be a great place.
Thank you, Ms. Steinaker. Didn't want to pronounce you wrong. Thank you for your comments.
I'd like to, uh, just address as a, um, as a member of the public, uh, and then, uh, you know, fully disclose, um,
know, fully disclose, um I, we own a property directly across, um obviously some of you probably put this together, it's a three, three-way ownership um with uh Kirsten Basher and my daughter that spoke earlier, so just in full disclosure, um if, if that wasn't the case and I still own that property there, um I would have concerns and um you know, first and foremost, you know, to address that love children, love development, know the need um for that in our community, that's not being disputed here at all. Um I look at um, I look at my involvement in that property as an investment, um did a 100% renovation in a home, dumped a lot of money into it, it is probably one of that front porch is probably one of the most, that's what sold me, it's the most beautiful um view there, you're out looking over and knowing that the church was across the street was a huge selling point, now with that being said, we know the building's gonna sell. We know something will, somebody will purchase that building, the, the likelihood of a church purchasing it is probably slim, um but something of less impact and that's, that's the concern that I would like to raise is, you know, we are going to see now on an everyday basis a big increase in traffic, um vehicles in and out of there. Um children laughing and playing is a wonderful sound unless you have to live right next to it all the time, it's a concern and that's, that's not um when, when, I think when you don't live or have ownership there, all you see is the pleasant side of that. Um so we, we know that it's gonna change hands, we're just looking for something of less impact. Um just unlike, unlike the Munson that was approved uh from the previous comments, um just to address on that real quick, um that was a school, that was a school, though um there's a hospital across the street, residential on two sides. Um here, we're residential on four sides. It was a church, this is a huge change of use, activity-wise, um impact, uh vehicle impact, um all of those things, it's, it's a big change. Um you know, if just right up the street, we have McKinley School that's vacant. Um anybody purchasing there, they knew they were buying across from a school. It sits empty, it's got a playground, um you know, might be my, I guess my point is, when you purchase an investment property, whether it's a residential or whatever it is, um you look at when the use is changed, how's that going to impact you, how's it gonna impact the community? So you've got the good things that impact the community, but when you're directly there and, and I don't think the property that we own um along with um Ms. Nixon can be any closer and um so with those things, you know, we look at, it, this is not against the Head Start program, phenomenal, phenomenal program, um it's just as a four-sided residential community is this issues and that's, that's, I guess, would uh question that would bring my concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Basher.
I just wanted to um, sorry, I just wanted to clarify that the church um in, as of June, when we first listed this property, there hasn't been any services since June, not two years, so it has been sitting vac- vacant, abandoned since, not abandoned, but vacant since early June.
Thank you for that, update.
Hi, um my name is Chelsea and I'm just kinda thinking back to um living in a residential area that is in the city that while, yes, it's like, it's nice to be like, oh, well, this church holds up our property value, but at the same time, you're living in a city where no matter, like, say your neighbor moves and you get a new neighbor, they can do whatever they want to their house as long as it's, it's in, within like city regulations, so it may not, even though it's like not something that would appeal to you, it would still technically be okay to do. And with um McKinley School being at the top of the hill, when that was open, that had a lot of traffic flow, a lot of families coming in and out, a lot of children like going through the neighborhoods, walking home, so I feel like the flow of traffic and the amount of people just being in the area won't really be that big of a difference from when McKinley School was open. And my perspective and just with having to live up to, like, Head Start has to live up to high standards from both licensing and the Office of Head Start, so they would definitely ensure like a safe, healthy, clean environment for children and families, so I am definitely for this location.
Thank you, Chelsea, for your comments.
Um so my name is Nikki Schultz, I'm with the Great Start Collaborative, so I am everything early childhood, um prenatal through eight years old and I would um definitely agree with the prosides of um of agreeing to this property usage um as such. Um I would understand um some points of view on both uh for the homeowners, if it was differing um hours of operation, but the hours of operation, if, if you're planning on operating um late at night or something like that where it would change, um I think a lot of different things, um I might agree more, but to say that um I just totally agree with the use of, of it as, as stated.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz, for your comments.
I know at the beginning, we talked a little bit about the Head Start Lincoln site, which if you were to drive past that when the kids are out playing, it's actually quite a pleasant. It's, it's pretty nice, um and I get, I get the point of view that it's different when you're there all the time, I get that. But once it's a part of the community, I feel like the benefits will be great for everyone, um. I just, I see it going in positive directions. And but I do, I, I get, I get the I get the, there's always a, there's always uh different points of views and there's a different side to every story and I completely get that.
Thank you. Any other comments from our audience this evening?
I'd like to say that I, I do think that um a lot of the people who have, who have said, oh, you know, it's, it's fine, it's not gonna affect the traffic or whatever, it, it's definitely gonna increase the traffic, but like I said earlier, people fly down this hill. Um I would, I would definitely, when you guys are planning and you are doing your zoning and your safety, really think about that when you guys are putting fences up and how kids are gonna be brought in, the parking lot, the kids would have to walk, they'd have to be walked, almost roadside, there is a little bit of um parallel parking, um and I, I really, I would, I don't let my, the four, my four-year-old stepson, I would not let him out the front door here with this road as busy as it is, um it's gonna increase the traffic flow um up and down the hill, yes, but it's gonna increase just, just, I don't know, I am just not comforted by the fact that this is gonna be a lower income and these are the families that are gonna be basically flooding in front of my home twice a day instead of just church-going people once on Sunday and that really is gonna impact the families around here and I would encourage just for you guys to, to reconsider, please.
I have a question, I guess, for Kelly, but um, cause I'm, I guess, it could be my stupidity, um is this for lower income, Kelly? I just, I don't know.
N M C A Head Start, um Head Start programs are federally funded program and your placement in the program is based on your income level, um everybody who is part of our program, if the program is 100% free, um cause it's based on their income level, so it's a federally funded program, it is low-income families, um I don't equate low-income with um negativity to a person, um I think there are other factors that contribute to um a person's um character and references, um I think this is folks that want what's best for their children and they may not be able to financially afford it and they've sought help in the best way possible for them to um get early education opportunities for their kids, but it is a 100% federally funded program and they qualify based on income.
Thank you, I hope I'm not the only one that needed that info, but.
Uh can I ask Kelly a question, John?
Sure, do I, is that Kevin?
Yes, Kevin. Kelly, how many people are going, how many children are going to be enrolled in this program? What's the maximum?
Their maximum number is 52 children, the early Head Start expansion um collaborative centers have eight children per classroom and there would be two classrooms and our Head Start classrooms have a capability up to 18 children per classroom, so a total of 36 on that side, giving you 52 total.
Okay, so that's the only additional traffic that would happen at that time due to, because of this, this program, correct? They come in and they'd leave, right, drop them off and, and come get them. That's, that's my opinion, I'm asking, I mean, max. So that would be the increase in traffic of the area at that time due to your uh endeavors.
Correct, and not all of our families would be driving, okay, not all of our families would be driving, we, our hope and want is that some will be um walk, it'll be walkable for them, um and there is public transportation, um many of our families um take public transportation to get to um the different centers that they um have their children enrolled at.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
John, I have a question or two for staff, if, if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. Bowman.
Um John, indoor mic, so kind of back to the standards, as noted in the staff report, this use is a, technically a permitted use, that still requires a special land use permit, is there, why is it that, that this use isn't frankly, are just simply permitted in a residential zoning area as we have here? Why does it require a special land use permit?
Well, basis of all special land use permits are that in probably a majority of cases or at least maybe greater than 50% cases, they would be permitted by right, but there are some, potentially some unique aspect that would maybe warrant not 100% of sites in that district being suitable and that, of course, would change uh use by use, uh so uh that's essentially what it's there for, it's, it's kind of like a saying, we think in most cases it would work, but not in every case and how do we look at those unique cases where it might not work and of course, the, how you would determine that would be certainly level of impact and uh individual site circumstances and proximity locations.
Okay, that, that helps, John, and I think when we go to the, kind of the basis of determination for special land use, as I also outlined in the, in the staff report, I think I keep coming back to what is the actual standard, if we talk about how great Head Start is, I don't think anybody can functionally question that, if we talk about how it's going to change what people saw yesterday, we can't question that, but I think what's important is we have to just go to the objective standard and of course, the judging of that objective standard isn't entirely objective, it's all based upon our perception of, of that impact and so at least for me, when I look at whether this is harmonious with the character of the adjacent property, whether it will inappropriately change the essential character and whether the special land use shall not interfere with the general enjoyment, those are the three that really apply to me and that I've been struggling a lot with as I've considered this use and still consider frankly my, this, this vote by this body and I struggle on a number of sides as, as described by both sides, one, previously you moved, people moved to a neighborhood where there was a school up the hill, there were cars coming down that hill, I don't think, there is no traffic report that can tell us objectively one way or the other what's going to change, we do know that the number of people at this site on a Tuesday will change, we heard mention of a towing company that's on the other side of the church, so I think it's, it's such a difficult measuring and I think that's the measuring that this planning commission needs to do, not necessarily whether um frankly, the social impact of the individuals there or um how good Head Start is, to me, those are irrelevant issues and continue to question in my mind the impact of this area on this zoning district, thank you.
And, and one thing to keep in mind too is, is what I come back to is uh schools are permitted by right in our R1 through our four districts, which means when they passed the zoning ordinance, they felt, you know, and most schools do have a playground, they felt that schools and playgrounds were acceptable by right in our R1 through our four districts, so um you know, you have to look at the whole gamut from one end to the other and, and that's what makes, makes it a challenge because um what are you, what are you supposed to conclude from, from that determination, you know?
John, this is Mayor Philkins, I just wanted to clarify whether or not you closed public comment?
I know, I'm still been running everything right now since. John, I, I am open to all the public comments, so it's, it's a little awkward doing the Zoom meeting, so. Really, we should look, we should look uh clo- close public comment if there is no public comment and then go to planning commission discussion and then at that point in time, then Greg would have to not participate in the planning commission discussion, he can participate all the way until you close the public hearing, so maybe one last call for public comment and then uh then go to planning commission discussion. Good plan, we can do that, so, e- everyone in our audience right now give everyone an opportunity after hearing everything, that's why I've kept everything running.
I, I'd just like to share that um Head Start has been a longstanding um, has been, has been studied for many, many years, back in the eighties, um was one of the first uh research projects and it shows that students were from Head Start and uh all more assets when they grow up, they're better parts of the community, um so I like one of the other, someone else was talking about, you gotta wave both. like one of the other, someone else was talking about, you got to wave both, uh, when you look at the both side, when you look at both sides, and you got to keep some of that irrelevant. And putting both sides away, if you think about it in long terms, one can start to see how it benefits the community and brings us all closer together and is able to to create more of a pleasant, open atmosphere, uh, for all involved. I don't know if that made sense, I apologize if I railed.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, any comments for a close this public hearing down? Try to be really lenient. Okay, seen and/or hearing, no additional comments. At this time, I will close the public hearing to public comment. You will hear and/or see, whichever options you have, the board will now discuss everything that we have listened to. I thank everyone for all their comments. Okay. Having said all that, uh, board members, thoughts?
I just want to let you know, this is Ryan Schultz, and I did get to listen to public comment. I did have a work commitment run over.
Ryan's number four. Thank you, Ryan.
Welcome, sir.
Board, anyone?
I got some, I got something. You know, with McKinley being vacant right now, not sure what its fate will be. I know they're going to be talking about it, whether it's going to be demolished or however they're going to end up using it. So that's one vacant building, a big one with a lot of space. And then we've got this other one, just down the street, that's two vacant places. And the church is a, it's a beautiful building and it's just sitting and it, there's, there's something that doesn't sit right with me, we're just letting buildings sit and decay without some sort of appropriate use. And we've seen what's happened up at McKinley, but it's sort of off the beaten trail for a lot of people and leaves it wide open for vandalism. And keeps on happening. Nothing's happened to this particular building. But, uh, just the fact that it's another vacant building on a street that used, used to have a, you know, a degree of activity. Of course, McKinley had a lot of activity, you know, so there was a lot of traffic going up and down the road and I, and listening to, what's it, who lives across the street is worried about the traffic, right? You know, same thing on Crippin Street, people are tearing around up and down these roads, you know, and of course, being up on a hill, people come flying down the hill, there'd be some way to put up warning signs or whatever to, you know, slow down, but yeah, there will be an increase, but I don't think it will be anywhere near what, um, McKinley had as far as traffic. And it was that way for how long, you know, that McKinley was in operation? So that concern, you know, I absolutely understand that. I talked about, talked to the kids that I, grandkids left next door about the traffic turning around, coming up Crippin and ripping around the corner over there by Diggins. You know, sometimes just screaming out, "Slow down", yeah. I think we can, you know, signage or whatever it would take to take care of that. But I think ultimately, you know, just having another building just sitting, not doing anything, just seems a bit of a shame when it's such a, you know, useful building and to be used as a school seems to be appropriate.
So this is Mayor Philkins. Um, I really appreciate, um, all of the, uh, presentation this evening and all of the, uh, discussions that have been going on. And I've been sitting here being very thoughtful about what this could mean for our community. And it's our work here on the planning commission to listen to these, um, prospects or projects being brought forward to us. And, you know, identifying, yes, it meets the criteria, yes, it meets the need in the, in the community, but basically it meets the criteria for the planning commission to be able to go ahead and make a motion and move it forward for the rest of the process. This is just the beginning. And so, you know, with the space going away at Kenwood, and with an earlier comment about the fact that this part of our city that we're talking about, you know, we want to, we want to do good things for all parts of our city and the people who live within it. And, um, as many have said, this is a beautiful building. And it would be an investment in our children's future. And so I think that our work here this evening is just to take uh, into consideration everything that's been said, to consider the motion that has been presented to us by the city staff members who have done their homework and then put it to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Philkins. John, is there a towing company existing at or around Crippin and North there? As mentioned by somebody from the public?
I'm not familiar with that. I don't know, Mike, if, if you're familiar, or, like, Coy, if you're familiar with that.
Joe, I, I heard that earlier and that's something we're going to have to check into because it certainly is not a permitted home occupation in a residential neighborhood.
I have seen records parked where they're indicating. Uh, it's right there by the alley. Yeah, we can certainly check on that and, uh, report back. If that's not a permitted use, we could, uh, pursue action on that.
Is the public allowed to speak or no?
Uh, no, not at this time. But thank you. Um, something else just to, for board members, not that it was a use, but there's another church a few blocks over that has been converted into apartments. Um, you know, apartments, you got people there 24/7 versus this, it's, uh, my notes, I don't know, eight to three. Uh, just comment to board members out there.
So somebody could buy this church if we didn't do this, and they could put apartments up there, John? Or Mike? So if somebody bought the church, destroyed it, tore it down, they could put apartments in there then, right? So residential use?
Kevin, the, the other church kept itself a church and made it apartments.
But I'm saying that church could be removed and another apartments could be built in there, correct?
Mike, you want to respond to that one?
My opinion, Kevin, is that would have to go through a rezoning because it's currently Zone One Family Residential.
But I'm just saying, there's other uses that could go in there. There's other uses that could go in there that would change the whole area, right?
You, you can, you can pay for anything in any district that's listed by special use permit. And again, some of those uses are heavier than others and would have a better fit than others and have to be weighed against all the general criteria and certainly every one would produce a different balance of impacts, both visually, uh, traffic-wise and maybe even noise-wise. And for some uses, the noise might come from within the building and not from without the building, so yeah, the, each one produces a very different impact. We've had people apply to do, uh, candy packaging and, and different things in, in old church buildings and you know, just a lot of different things. And so, yeah, you, you could try to list them all that might go in there and that put them on your list of, "I'd rather have this and not that", but it, it gets to be a challenging choice.
No, I understand, that's why I asked the question. There's all sorts of stuff that could happen there that people got to look at. For the least impact on the area, in my opinion, this school would be a perfect fit for it. It'd have a minimal a- amount of change for the area and a minimal amount of destruction or whatever you want to call it, disorganization of the area, in my opinion.
Another thing to keep in mind on this is, right now, they're proposing staggered start times and uh, that, of course, would minimize the traffic at one time because of uh, spreading that traffic out over a period of time. All these impact things that, that, that could potentially happen, whether it be aesthetic or noise or whatever, uh, you, you do have the opportunity to approve the special use with whatever uh, modifications that, that are appropriate. In other words, i- if you thought staggered start times was important, uh, to minimize traffic impact, uh, you could certainly, uh, uh, approve the use subject to uh, use of the staggered start times as proposed. Uh, the aesthetics, uh, you know, if, if viewing the playground areas deemed not to be aesthetic, you could have a, because it's depressed, you could have a relatively short fence, three or four feet. And you could have beautiful landscaping in front of the fence, uh, and that would be very beautiful for the houses across the street. It would also help minimize any sound that might come up, out from there. But you also have to remember, uh, the noise level from a playground generically on a school, like a grade school or a high school, I mean, people are, kids are older, they're screaming, they're running, they'll crack a baseball and bats and, and all this thing. Where, how much noise are, are, uh, you know, zero through three-year-olds making? Or, you know, up to five-year-olds? I don't think it's, the sound levels will be the same uh, for this facility as they would be for, say, a grade school. But that said, you could still, through your site plan reviews, require some things that would help to mitigate, uh, both noise and, and site anesthetics if you would like to do that. Mr. Coy, did you have other comments?
Um, just, uh, with respect to a question that Kevin Fent had, um, the church that John mentioned that has some apartments in it, there are some neighborhoods closer to Mitchell Street and closer to town that have a zoning that is called multifamily. And the church John mentioned, for example, may be in one of those blocks that's zone multifamily. This particular, um, location is zoned for one family. So, um, you know, there may be particulars why that other church was allowed to be turned into apartments. Um, I will say, um, I have fielded over the past six months, a couple of requests um, from developers and realtors inquiring as to if this could be turned into a multifamily building as is. So, you know, we, we get inquiries like that.
Thank you, Mr. Coy. Uh, Mr. Wallace, let me know if I'm wrong, but special land use will stay with the property?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, board members, any other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion one way or another.
John, could you put up the recommended motion that you had in, in the staff report?
Sure. Can you, can you see that on the screen? You, you like have a list up of picking something, table of contents is what we're looking at, John. Okay. Uh, there, now you're back, okay. Subject following conditions, you were close. Let me get it, uh. It was two slides, it was to approve the special land use request application submitted by 131 Group LLC for childcare facility at 403 East North Street, subject to the following conditions. Really, it was only one condition that was, uh, multiple parts of that. It was for a final site plan for the play area screening and parking should be reviewed and approved by the city. Uh, as part of that condition, uh, I would feel comfortable if you designated whether you wanted that review and approval to be by the planning commission or the administrative site plan review committee, which consists of Mike and myself and the department heads. You know, I'm open to either one, either one would be fine with me. But if you wanted to have a little more comfort in this decision and you felt you wanted to review the site plan, we could certainly, uh, uh, bring that back for full review by the planning commission. And the second part of the conditions was just that the, uh, site plan, uh, should include all the details, the things that we really need to tell, whether it's going to work, uh, one of the different sizes of, uh, fencing, the types of fencing, uh, height, what if any landscape materials going in, what size is it, what is its impact, is it deciduous or we would just have to know all those details so that we would truly know the impact, uh, of what was being done. And, uh, that is what was written at, as of, uh, prior to the start of the meeting. But in light of the meeting, if you wanted to, uh, consider other uh, conditions such as, uh, uh, they're, uh, continuing with what, what they're proposing in terms of staggered start times or whether, uh, while we could include landscape as part of the site plan, but we could clarify that the site plan also included potential, uh, landscape treatment. Uh, we could certainly do that as well, so, um, it, it's up to you what you want to include, uh, because we, we could try to more specifically address some of the concerns that were raised tonight by the public in terms of aesthetics, uh, and/or traffic impact, uh, and that could principally come to play with, uh, perhaps, uh, maintaining those staggered start times. That's if you, you know, if you think it's, if, if you think that's a big deal, you know, it's, it's up to you what, how you weigh these, these impacts.
Well, I guess I'll make a motion.
Mr. Bunce?
Yeah. My motion would be to approve this with conditions and that those conditions being, as they speak of the, the fencing and landscaping and all that, could go and be approved by the city would not need to come to the planning commission for those details. So I am moved to approve this site with conditions.
I'll second it.
Mr. Fent, second it? A roll call of this, Mr. Coy?
I will be taking a roll call, uh, vote here. Ryan Schultz, you will be included, so I hope you can still hear and communicate.
Yes, sir. I can.
Baumann?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Fent?
Yes.
Putvin?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Not present and, uh, Bosher has, um, abstained on this vote. So, um, the, uh, special land use passes, um, with the condition that the final site plan, um, be approved by the city site plan review committee, which involves multiple people. And we have a very specific checklist of what's required, so we will be getting that to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Coy. Is it, is it possible for, I know, uh, the city had bought in four of the little speed checker things that I see around town that tell people their speeds and slow down or thank you? Possible at a point to have one of those going down the hill for traffic control?
It is portable, it can. We will let our police department know, no question. And I, I do have to agree that I, I believe next fall, um, if that's when the Head Start, um, classes will begin, I do believe particularly during school hours, you will see greater, uh, police patrol in that specific area.
Due to the steepness of that hill, it is very hard, you gotta be on your brakes, you just have to. You can't coast, you will be forty plus mile an hour by the time you get down, so, um, just the nature of what it is and yeah, people don't pay attention, yeah, your, your speed gets out of hand.
Um, the machine on, uh, castes seems, seems to be working quite well. Uh, I come in that way a lot and I, I see people slow right down cause I can see their, their speed on the, uh, on the board before I get there and I, I see them slow down. So they do work.
Okay, uh, thank you, everyone, everyone, for all their comments this evening. Um, I'll go back here to my schedule for tonight, uh, my agenda. So at this time, we have no new, new business, old business there being none. Open this up to, uh, board member comments if there are any, yeah, at this time.
Yes, this is, uh, Ryan Schultz. I just want to let Mike know, uh, when you look into the, um, oh, the wrecker company there, I'm pretty sure that's Beaman's Towing, that, uh, and, and the owner actually lives in that neighborhood. I'm pretty sure that's probably the same, the same, uh, building you're looking at or the area.
I, I think you're right, Ryan.
Thank you. We will look into that. Um, they don't run the business there, but there certainly are things in the zoning, uh, not the zoning, it has to do with the, um, uh, parking in streets that commercial vehicles are not supposed to be, um, parked in, you know, the single family residential neighborhoods. So we'll, um, yeah, I will follow up with the appropriate person within our police department, uh, tomorrow.
Mike, maybe it's cause if he's on call, I don't know, he takes one home, I don't know. That would not be permitted then if he's on call to have a vehicle?
I can't say that for sure because it's not a part of the zoning ordinance. Um, I, I, I think it has to do more with parking, but I'll, I'll just have to read the ordinance and I, I will read the ordinance and talk to our police department.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I guess I'm gonna wish everyone a good Thanksgiving, however you may or may not do it, I don't know. Um, even myself, I'm in the air of what to do or stuff. So, um, happy Thanksgiving, everyone. That's my comment.
Thanksgiving, everybody.
Just stay safe.
Uh, other than that, uh, John, uh, you, uh, I doubt there was any other communications, either John or Mike?
No, uh, no communications and there was no, uh, communications on the case that you took tonight that was formally settled.
Okay. At this time, I, uh, it's public comment. Any, anyone has any comments about anything?
Well, the vote was certified today down in Lansing by the Board of Canvassers, yeah.
There you go. Well, thank you for that update. There being no other business, uh, we're gonna adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Be safe. We're out.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.